So I was, I was talking this morning to Debbie and how so many folks, and I'm sorry the mic, every time I move the table, there's a little, but that's not me. About how is it that we're going to bring so many that need the church back in through the doors? Because there is comfort in watching online service in your jammies on a cold Sunday morning, right? There is, but look at this and look what we get by being with each other. You know, and that, that spirit and that belief, we need to bring people through the doors. So I'm seeking, seeking ways to share, looking for those who, who need us, who need that kind of support that we can offer each other as women, as families, to share all of these things that trouble our hearts. So can we pray? And then Ms. Millie wants to talk, so I better quit. So Lord, we come before you as women who desire to fulfill your world. Lord, we want that word to speak through us so that we can reach others, inspire them, help them not to be afraid in this uncertain world, but empowered with you, Lord. The words that you've given us, the words that are so clear in Scripture that can be shared among a world that needs you, Lord. They need you so badly and we want to be that light to them. We want to open their eyes, encourage them, help them, bring them to you, Lord. Use us in a way that you use everyone before us to seek you. Lord, be with Millie today, Amelia, as she teaches us from our Women's Bible Study on Joshua and how Joshua's succession from Moses was inspired through you, Lord. You made him courageous. You helped him speak your holy word. And Amelia's going to share that with us today. So thank you, Lord. Thank you for all the beautiful blessings that you deliver to us through your nature, through this time together, and inspire Millie to just inspire us, Lord. Thank you. Amen. Don't forget this cute little Jordan. Thank you, Lori.
Thank you, Lori. It was beautiful. So I'm really used to teaching teenagers and talking to teenage girls. So it's a little intimidating, but then I thought, you know, the encouragement that I got from Joshua, especially the part where he and the children of Israel are moving forward, is that we are inspired by those that come before us. And I'm inspired by all the women that have come into my life here at the church, everybody. And it's, it's a real motivator for me and I also look to everyone for wisdom and for comfort. And I, I really do receive it. So this was a crazy chapter for me. I started as soon as I got this book. As soon as Becky brought it in, I immediately dived into it because I was really intimidated by it. And then I ended up becoming really, really, a little too crazy with it. I had too much going on. Does it get mic help, Christian? I'm going to be knocking on that whole large. But then I also got the Be Strong. There are no more right here in the room, but Becky did put in order. It should be in here soon if you guys want to get it. But it did clarify a lot of things. It added more to it. I know we get an expert from it. But it really helped. So starting in the first part of the chapter that we have Forward by Faith, I was wondering how Rahab's story had to do with Joshua's story. That second part that, you know, where it starts in the study where it's all about Rahab and then it all of a sudden jumps into Joshua. I was like, why? But it was the moving, it was Rahab was understanding what true faith was. And Joshua, I should have wrote it down, was understanding how to move forward by faith. And so it was two, it was, it was the cause and effect. It was the, the two that go into one. You can't have one without the other. You have to understand what true saving faith is and then you have to move forward by it. So Rahab's story is such a powerful testimony because of who she was and how God used her. And when I was thinking about her, I was remembering that song. I forgot the name of the song, but the chorus goes like this. It was like, "Not because of who I am, but because of what you've done. Not because of what I've done, but because of who you are." And it hits so hard. And I've always said, you know, I'm always doubting my ability to do something and in a way that makes me doubt God. And who am I to doubt God? I am a tool to be used. I am a vessel. I am a clean canvas for him to paint on, for him to create. I am the clay. I don't have to mold and shape myself. He is the molder. He is the creator. And so going back into her background, the Hebrew word that's translated harlot could also mean that one who kept an inn. And that was a huge argument between theologians, I can't see. Theologians and, you know, biblical studies. And we could absolve Rahab of all immortality and call her the prophetess of, like, the proper prophetess of an inn. But there is no escape for what her background was because in James 2:25 and Hebrews 11:31, the writers used the Greek word that really means prostitute. She was a prostitute. And so this was her background. The culture of Jericho was hugely pagan influenced. It's all about gods. It was all about yourself. They had this huge wall to protect them. And then we think about where she lived. She lived on the second outer wall. That is a very easy place for when they're attacked by enemy, that's the wall that gets hit first. So basically she was in the red light district. I think as a prostitute and where she was, she had to have a feeling of hopelessness. I'm sure she turned to every god that anybody offered that she saw and she prayed out and she knows that none of them ever spoke back, that she never received any comfort. And she knew in her heart, this is all fake. And then that hopelessness, because it also shows her concern for her family. And so you know that she wasn't just making money for herself to live this lavish lifestyle like people try to paint it today. No, she was living to provide in this harsh, harsh environment. Rahab grew, grew up in the city of pagan practices. But when she heard of God and everybody was talking about it, there's this huge Israelite army sweeping through the desert, going to, like, going to city to city to city and king after king saying, "You can't pass through here." And they're like, "Oh, what does God say? We can." And they're just taking over and taking over. And so the Jericho, they're trembling. They know it's coming. They're scared. They have, they have soldiers patrolling the streets, watching an eye out. All the citizens are seeing who's a spy, what's going on. They're hearing this. They're talking about it. And she sees this real fear. And the people who are coming out, not from, who doesn't live in Jericho, the people are coming from the coast of the Mediterranean Sea, they're probably talking all about it too. They probably witnessed it themselves. And so she's hearing about this word of mouth. And I think in her heart, she knew this is the one true God. And how wonderful would it be if I belonged to him? I feel that because I felt that. I really feel like that's what she said. And so there are some points of faith that, that our author, Warren Worsby, wanted to point out. And there is courageous faith, confident faith, and there is also covenant faith. Courageous faith is true saving faith that cannot be hidden long. If you have faith, you don't hide it. Remember when we all first became Christians and it's all of a sudden like knocking on every door? Have you heard? Have you heard? Have you heard this word? All of a sudden our family members, we can't seem to shut up about it to them and they don't want to hear it. Our, our friends think we're crazy. They're like, "Oh, look, Millie's gone Christian. How long do you think it's going to last? Is it just so she can stay with, living with her mom?" Kidding. But it's really, it's courageous faith. So true saving faith cannot be hidden for long. And we can make a long list of people who put their faith into action. And even when tragedy falls, those who stifled, thrown away and denied their faith. There's a lot of people who did that. There's, oh my goodness, I can't remember his name, but he was a follower of Jesus. He denied Jesus three times. Peter. There are just so many examples of these people who really try to push it down instead of being courageous with it, who try to hide in fear of it than being courageous. Especially in our world today where the fashion is to attack Christians and dissect everything we say and twist it around, whether it's about abortion, whether it's about politics, homosexuality. It causes a fear in us and especially feeling our young people do not speak up, do not be an individual in Christ and instead become lost in the crowd of other naysayers and yaysayers. So that same courageous faith has pushed against sin in this secular world that we see. I saw last night at my cousin's fundraiser is that we're just being swarmed with believers. There is micro drill there. There is Shannon Grove there. There was my whole family, the Sars and the Shepherds. And it was just, we prayed before it started and then we said the Pledge of Allegiance. And you felt it. You felt the difference of that. So the next part, other than courageous faith, is having that confident faith. Worsby wrote that faith is only as good as its object. Some people have faith in faith and think that just by believing they can make great things happen. Others have faith in lies, which is not faith, but superstition. We have those, name it and claim it, a lot of terrible beliefs, especially when it comes to sickness. Someone once said, I once heard someone say, "Well, you didn't pray hard enough" or "your faith wasn't good enough and that's why that person died." Like you didn't have that strength. And that's not true at all. You know, it's, it's the faith in God. It's the confidence in God, not the confidence in ourselves, not the confidence in what we can do, what power we manifest in ourselves, because we really don't have none. Without God, we're still empty vessels. Without God, we can't really do anything. Without God, we probably would cause more harm on this earth than we would good. He is the main factor in our lives who make us us. He is the definition of who we are. Not just some extra power up or an accessory or a Sunday social gathering. He is our entire lives. And so we go from confident faith into the intellect, knowledge of faith. True saving faith isn't a feat of intellectual gymnastics where we just make ourselves believe it and really force ourselves to believe it. We can't convince ourselves that something is true when it really isn't true, nor is it merely a stirring of the emotions that gives us a false sense of confidence that God will do what we feel like he would do. We can't force, and I, I tried many, many times. I was acting and I realized I was acting like a little kid. I was like, "Well, if you just did this, I promise I would do this." Or if I feel this way, if I trick him into feeling that I don't want it, maybe he will give it to me. If I trick him into thinking that I'm ready for it, maybe he'll give it to me. It doesn't happen that way. God knows. God knows everything. He knows when our confidence is real. He knows when it's lacking. He knows where that confidence lies. True saving faith involves the whole personality. The mind is instructed, the emotions are stirred, and then the acts in obedience to God. The intellect, knowledge and understanding of the Word of God is that knowledge of the word. And it can't just be one little verse out of context. You have to go through it all. And you don't have to know the whole Bible in a deep, deep way like Pastor Michael does. We're constantly learning. We're constantly growing and evolving and learning these things. And as the Bible becomes clearer to you, there's more of a responsibility with what you have learned. I know I've been going off about Leviticus for weeks now, but I have never been able to read Leviticus when I was younger. I always thought it was the most absurd thing on earth. I would just pass through it. But as I started to read more about the history of what was going on and I have a more mature and clear understanding of it, Leviticus is amazing. He literally was giving the Israelites, like, the basics of morality and what to do. He's like, "If your neighbor's cow is off, like, running in the field, don't ignore it. Go grab that cow, bring it back and hold on to it for your neighbor." And it blows me that I didn't understand that before. Like, there's a whole bunch of things there that just clearly make sense. And so now I have this understanding. So the intellect, knowledge and understanding of the Word of God. With that comes the emotion, the stirring and the tug in your heart. We all felt it. I was trying to write down in words and explanation what that meant, but I really feel like we've all felt it. That's why we're here. We have things that we open up the Bible and it literally is alive to us. We get so much wisdom from it. We glean from it. We learn from it and we connect with it. In our sorrows, it says in Romans 8, that even when you cannot express what you're trying to say, God understands the groaning of your, of your heart, of your soul. I find so much comfort in that. Like, I don't even have to say anything, God. Like, I was miserable. I don't know how to pray. I don't know what to pray for, but you said right here, "You understand me," it says, "being patient and confident in what you do not have." And it's amazing that it just continues. And so we all have that emotion. We all have that stirring when we read the Word of God. But then the most important part, the will, the application and the effect after the cause. What we do with that knowledge and that emotion and what we do with it in our lives, actually applying it. One thing you do not need to know, the Bible inside and out, on the deepest level, theological skill and magical. What we do know is that you, what you do understand, you will feel the emotion of whatever it may be and you will act on it. I encourage you, as you read the word or are stirred by the word and you recognize when you are called to act on the living word of God and move according to his will, whatever it may be. I want to read some verses where I have John 15:15. "No longer do I call you servants, for a servant does not understand what his master is doing. But I have called you friends, because I have learned from my father. Everything I have learned from my father, I have made known to you." I don't know how much clearer the Bible can get. I mean, the structures are so simple. The stories, they, they flow together. They really do, because when you think about it, it all starts stemming from the love of God and his mercy and what he wanted from us and what he wanted to give us. It all flows together. It's one beautiful, long song. Concerned faith comes afterwards. So we already went through, I lose everything. I have everything blowed up because I can't see very well. We have courageous faith, confident faith, the knowledge of faith, and then we also have concerned faith. I often say that salvation comes with responsibility. And I understood that when I got saved. Well, not when I got saved. It actually came sometime after. I didn't learn that right away. I had to learn that the hard way like I usually do with things. But salvation comes with responsibility and that's such a powerful thing. I don't know where I heard it from. I don't know if it was Pastor Bob. I don't know where, but it just resonated with me that I have a responsibility with my faith. I can't just take this little light and hide it. I have to let it shine. And another example of acting in the will of God, of the word, because many times it is said, "Go therefore, make disciples of all nations, baptizing them in the names of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit, teaching them and observe all that I command of you. And behold, I am with you always, to the end of the age." He doesn't want us to keep to ourselves. Rahab didn't keep to herself. She shared it with her family. She gave it to them too. She could have saved herself. She could have shaved her own skin. To be honest, if she told her family, even one family member was against her, they would have ran, ran and told the king and they would have executed her right there. She put so much on the line. She even put the rest of her family on the line. In Romans 10:5. "Because if you confess with your mouth that the Jesus is the Lord and believe in your heart that God raised him from the dead, you will be saved." She held on to that promise and she confessed it. She may not have known Jesus, but she confessed about Jesus. She said to the spies, "I have heard about your God and truly he is the one true God." Your God. She said, "Your God," that possessiveness that they have with him, that he belonged to them and they belonged to him, that they, those were his people. You can almost hear the jealousy, the longing in her heart for that. And then acknowledging that he was the one true God, she confessed it. How insane is that in a pagan, like, pagan religion infested city that she understood that? It, it blows my mind. And then the most important is 1 Corinthians 11:1. Jesus said, oh, it wasn't Jesus, but it says, "Be imitators of me as I am of Christ." We are always showing an example of who it is, of who we are in Christ. And you know Rahab, she was a prostitute, but she stepped out in faith. And I'm really, really grateful that the spies, you know, instead of just blowing her off as like some pagan or some outsider in the, like, from the Israelite community, because even God laid down some Leviticus laws to say, "There's a foreigner that wants to celebrate you. They must be circumcised and then just treat him as one of the own, because then he's adopted in the family." They just learned that. They literally just learned that. I don't know the time difference from where these two spies were to when that law was written. I don't know the time difference, but that was just recent. And they paid attention. They had these words on their mouths. They were learning it. They were in the Word of God. They were in what he said. They were remembering what Moses taught them, what Joshua was still leading them in, and they were acting upon that word. They weren't just saying like, "No, you're not going to know." True saving faith isn't, oh, that's not it. So covenant faith. Covenant is simply an agreement, a contract between two or more parties with certain conditions laid down for all parties to obey. There are many divine covenants in the Bible, such as circumcision or in Jesus when the lamb's blood was put on a doorstep. Rahab had shown her faith by hanging that rope, a scarlet rope. And I'm sure in some way that has significance because red is the color of blood and blood is what Jesus has built on a cross. Blood has been a huge, a huge sign, a huge part of covenant since back in the Garden of Eden when God had to slaughter an animal to atone for the sins of Eve and Adam so that he can clothe them in their shame. That was the first blood sacrifice and blood has life in it. That's why he said to the Israelites, "You may not like, you have to drain the blood from the animals before you eat them, because the life is in the blood. The life is in the blood. Our life is in the blood of Jesus. Her life was in the blood of Jesus." And that blood that God was going to send his son down to the earth to spill for us on that cross. I started being so excited. It's just like, it blows my mind. It really blows my mind because it's just like his plan is so perfect. And so as we just remember that, this is what, understanding what true saving faith is. It isn't just a hope based on lies. It's a hope based on facts. We have facts right here through every part of our lives. In every part of our lives, we have had faith shown. Our faith has been proved to us. And it's amazing that, I think this morning I was thinking of the women who acted out on their faith. I was thinking about Lori Campbell. I can't see. Lori Campbell, you know, she was going to quit her job and she didn't know where else, like, what she was going to do next. But now she's working at Care Pregnancy Resource Center. And that's an act of faith. That's a lady on God's will. I just, I just was thinking about so many women that done that in this church. Everybody that's done that. Pastor Michael, who on the faith of God came to this church. For the people who stayed to still work in ministry after the true split, we didn't know what was going to happen. It was a skeleton crew, like, before I came on staff. They didn't know if everyone was just going to drop off, if all of a sudden it was going to close, just acting on faith. When we opened the doors back, back during COVID, when we opened the doors, we're acting on the faith of God to keep us open. Every day we're staying on the faith of God to keep these doors open. Not because we're lacking in anything, because he provides everything. We have that confidence. And I think Rahab really speaks because she was a woman that we would not think would ever have that confidence. Like, who is she and the thousands that lived in that city, living on the outer banks of it, on the wall where no one wants to be at, because that's the first place that's going to get hit? Who is she among thousands? Among thousands. You know that there had to be some rich scholars in there that probably knew a lot and did a lot, important people, and even more religious people that really thought that they were just the bee's knees. But here God chose someone lowly. I don't know what her personality was. I would really love to talk to her, but you know what? God still decided to exalt her for her faith. She is in the lineage of Jesus Christ. She married into that family. She married into the Israelites. She married Myssalman and they begot Boaz. And we all know about Boaz because he's like prime example of a husband, Ruth and Boaz. And you know, it's amazing that Boaz, as he's described in the Bible, was also a good man of God, a good man of faith. She helped raise him that way. So when she entered the Israelite family, it didn't just stop there for her. She became one. She became a child of God. And in her heart, there was that armad change. Now that she knew the Word of God, her emotions were stirred and she acted in the will of it. I should also bring across that it really irritated me that they kept on bringing up, was it okay for her to lie? We all saw that question. I don't know if anyone else stumbled over it. Did anybody else kind of stumble over it because they asked it twice? Yeah. So just to quickly go through that, it was not. But the thing was that she didn't know about the new law. The law was given to the Israelites. She hadn't heard the law. The law wasn't being tweeted or being emailed or being mass produced. It was just between the Israelites, but they had heard from God. And so she did not know. So she is exempt from that. And once again, it's coming through the understanding of the word. The more you learn, the more responsibility you have. And so I feel, correct me if I'm wrong, that God had a mercy for that. But she also took her lie and used it for good. Not to say, now that we do know the word and we do know that's wrong, do not lie. I had done it recently, very immaturely, in my anger. And I think God was giving me opportunity to act on what I was learning and I failed. But I recognize that failure. And so it gives us opportunity to learn and grow because we're not ever going to get it perfect. We can always strive to be better examples and to be honest about our, our mistakes so that we can help others grow and that we can acknowledge who we are and be examining ourselves through the Word of God to become stronger and more mature Christians. By the way, just a little side note, a historical, someone, archaeologist, went to the city of Jericho, where they all went, everyone kept on going there and they kept on saying, "Oh, it was an earthquake. What the hell was earthquake? God, he is earthquakes. He just made them walk around it to scare the crud out of everybody." Like, he's going to use natural disasters for anything he wants, okay? He's God. It all belongs to him. He all created it. But he said that on one of the outer wall, the whole wall was crumbled except for one part, except for one house alongside that wall and still standing today. I just want to scream. That's Rahab's house. Like, it's still standing today. That promise is still standing today. That promise of salvation of acting through your faith still stands today. But do not misunderstand it with your own feelings and your own emotions. That your emotions and feelings be stirred by the truth of God, not by what you want, not by what you convince yourself is in your will, but what is in the will of God. So going into Joshua, after we understand what understanding what faith is, what understanding true faith is, we're going to start learning how to move forward by faith. I like that Worsby wrote, "The theme of the book of Joshua is the theme of the book of Hebrews. Let's go on." And the only way to go on is by faith. Unbelief says, "Let's go back to where it stays." But faith says, "Let's go forward to where God is working." The Christians, sorry. The one thing that many Christians have in common that we hear about, such as the martyrs or the missionaries, is that they all believed in God's promises and did what he told them to do. They were men and women of faith and God honored them because they believed in his word. Once again, they had that understanding and they did not keep it to themselves. Rahab, she acted on it. We can break down the mystery of how to move forward by faith, by three essentials. And these are also the questions I'm going to ask you. I should bookmark that. It's back here in my ripped up post-it notes. We're going to be answering questions eight, nine and 10 in our books. And so we're going to go over a discussion of that. I'm so sorry I didn't tell you before. It will be on chapter, on page 37. And so the walk of faith. So we break down the mystery of how to move forward by the three essentials. The word of faith, the walk of faith and the witness of faith, which I think are very important as part. So question one says, and question eight says, "What was the word of faith that Joshua counted on when his people reached the Jordan? Where did he get his word and why is that word faith and waiting intersect so often with God's plan?" Does anybody have something that they have written they'd like to share? Does anybody have something that they have written? Would you like to share?
So I thought it was for them to stand in the Jordan as they were crossing. It was this, you know, big river, and so they had to have faith, kind of like when they were crossing over the Red Sea. How are we gonna get, how are we gonna get there?
Yeah.
So it was waiting on the Lord, this instruction of putting their feet in the water for the Levite priests with the ark. So I think it was their faith, because it, it's like the first big miracle again that they, that they were gonna witness. So it's that new, you know, like they said before, everybody else had passed away at that time. It's been forty years, and so a lot of these people probably were children when they crossed the Red Sea or not yet born.
Yeah.
So that was their, you know, they did see, you know, miracles in the, in the desert with the manna and the quail and the water and all of those things, but this was also like, they were, they were being moved by God in a very miraculous way.
Yeah.
Also.
And that was their first time without Moses.
Yes.
Moses that was with them all the way.
With their new leader, yes.
Anybody else?
Oh, I have the verse, um, seven. Verse says, "The Lord said, 'Today I will begin to exalt you in the eyes of all Israel, so that they may know that I am with you as I was with Moses.'" And so to me, it was like God speaks to us through his word. And as Moses walked in faith, hearing God and acted and went before, you know, the Eve, Israel, you know, we too should walk in that, when God speaks to us in his word, and not in fear, but just to walk forward in what he says, because he's always with us, and he will, you know, give us his promises.
Exactly. And that is the word of faith. Taking what God says to it, just as Becky says, that he's telling them, I can't go walk out of her, just like Carol did. It's taking his word, his word and what his word says for us, and holding on to those promises. It's something that we don't often do. When I was saved, I received the promise from Jeremiah twenty-nine thirteen, "For you will find me when you seek me, when you look for me with all your heart." I have not turned back from that promise. And to be honest, I knew at that point, though, that I couldn't say, meet me halfway. He said, "With all your heart." He was telling me to go all the way and never ending. And he has more than met me. He has been with me, present beside me, his word and his, and his love. And so Joshua received the orders from the Lord. He obeyed them by faith. And so then faith comes by hearing, and hearing by the word of God, Romans ten seventeen. "It has been well said that faith is not believing in spite of evidence, but obeying in spite of consequence." It's also from Lauren Wiersby. Their faith wasn't a passive feeling, it was an active force. And living faith always leads to action. For as the body without the spirit is dead, so is faith without works dead also. So. So the walk of faith. Question nine. How might God earlier, how might God's earlier miracle of the Red Sea have helped the Israelites as they considered the obstacle of Jordan River? How can both these miracles help believers to learn and trust, to learn and trust God's leading today? Anyone like to answer that? How might God's earlier miracle at the Red Sea, such as when Moses had parted it, have helped the Israelites as they considered the obstacle of the Jordan River? How can both of these miracles help believers learn to trust God's leading today?
They had a history and they had experience of coming upon an obstacle, even at that time. It was not even as stressful as the time when they were being chased.
Yeah.
Necessarily, but they, I think that's another interesting analogy of the difference between when they were at the Red Sea. At that time, they were being chased, so they were running. But now at the Jordan, they're going forward and they're actually chasing something themselves. But, um, I think how it helped them is that they actually had experience and they had a history and they had seen how God can miraculously move for them.
Yeah.
And it would be foolish for them not to believe that they might do it again. So I think that was helpful.
I think it is too.
And how we can, I'm sorry, how we can apply that is that we can set up memory marks for when God does things for us, just as, you know, he told them to lay out the twelve stones and tell their children. But I think that for us, how it can be helpful for us is that we can set up memory marks when God does miraculous things, because we're very forgetful.
Yeah.
And if we don't set reminders of the miracles when we come through, or when we're facing another battle, we can begin to get shaky and wavering in our faith. But if we will ponder and remember the things of God that he's done and, and remind each other, the Bible tells us to speak of those things and to, to talk about them.
Thank you, Leslie. Lori, did you have something to say?
Oh, I was just gonna say that it, um, brought me to Luke one thirty-seven, where God, nothing could be impossible. And just like, that's how it can apply to us. We've seen the truth of what was written in the Bible, all these things that seem, well, they are impossible to keep us. We could do it, but God can do anything. God can do anything. That kind of showing these things that, I mean, it was a wall of water miles away, you know? It was a wall of water. It wasn't just like it dried up because it dried up. There's a wall, you know? Things like that. It's just, you know, that helps us in our faith, because God can do it again.
And again, and again.
Again and again.
Even, oh, just.
I was remembering just then, with the first open, with Moses in the water, the water opened first, and they walked on dry. But with Joshua, they had to get their souls wet. So the priests carried the ark, the priests with the rags, horns, had to step into the water. And he said, perhaps even Joshua was wondering, is this gonna work? And with that, anything that their soul would touch will be theirs, the reminder into the future.
Like. Yeah. It's amazing to see that. Let's find it. When people often ask for those big miracles, like where are they now? I say, well, it's in my life. Like, I don't understand. I don't think anyone sees the significance of what God has done in each and every single one of our lives. The influence it has on those around us, the change that is given to ourselves, the, um, the influence it has on our children. I was just talking to a friend recently, and I was, you know, just amazed. I was like, your child is a result of your faith right here. The way your child acts, the way she acts towards her friends, the way the influence is gonna be, it's an act of her faith. My mom, I hope that I am that proof, that Red Sea of faith for my mom, that she got to see in her prayers and her relentless hope for me. I hope that I am that, that, just like that confirming faith, that God is doing great things every day. I may not feel like a wall of water, you know? I might feel like, you know, maybe a, a wall of like sparkling water, but it's amazing what God still does every single day. We don't have to look for that big, big, like mountain shaking. The mountains in our hearts. When God was passing by the prophet, um, what was his name? Elijah, Elisha, someone. He just ran away from, um, who was it? Jezebel. And I think he's saying, like, God, show me to yourself, or show me something. Forgive me if I'm wrong, but I remember that there was a huge wind, but God was not in the wind. There's a huge earthquake, but God was not in the earthquake. And then there's something else. But then he heard God, like a whisper in the wind, a soft voice. To me, that speaks wonders. Like to hear him in your heart. It just, it speaks wonder. Before I got saved, I heard him in my, heard in my heart, and it really scared me, actually. I was kind of upset. He's like, Jesus is coming like a thief in the night. I was like, be quiet! And he came at me two more times after that. I was like, why are you saying it three times? You know what that means in the Bible? He was really trying to drive a point. So going, what Leslie was saying, we're actually going into like the witness of faith. So ten question, so question ten. "How does the witness of faith help believers who follow in the footsteps of those who saw God's great power? And what are some witnesses of faith that today's Christians can look to for strength and covenants to move ahead? How can today's believers become witnesses of faith for the next generation?" Does anybody have, uh, anything they'd like to share from that? Yes, it's Leslie.
This question actually convicted me, because I thought, wow, you know, how, how are we setting up our stones? How are we setting up our memories and telling the next generations of the things of God and, um, how God has intervened in our lives and, um, how have we lived our lives as a witness, as, um, having God's power demonstrated through our lives? But I think how we can be a witness of faith to those that follow in our footsteps again, we should document things. We should talk about things. We should openly, um, be vulnerable in, in times when we know we have our backs against the walls, and we'll talk about those things openly with one another and with our children and, um, make a show of God, I suppose. But I think sometimes we, we shrink and hide, um, or maybe we're, you know, when we're in, in places that are not necessarily safe places like this, we're not necessarily setting up those proclamations of who God is and who he's been in our lives. So I think that we could, uh, do the next generation a justice if we were more open and vulnerable and really show them where we've failed and how God has been merciful to us in our ups and our downs. Yeah, there's a little bit of conviction there for me with that one.
It's like being complacent, you know, like, when God saved you, it was wonderful and amazing thing. He did so many wonderful things. And then years go by, and it's just like, you just begin to minimize it, you know, and you're not holding it up to that amazing thing he did for you. It's like, you don't wanna, you don't wanna be complacent.
It's just a lifestyle.
Yeah.
You have to have that.
Yeah.
Rahab confident faith, but she didn't hold it to herself. Anybody else? So actually I have two stories. I'm gonna pull Becky. So when I was reading that part, and I was reading about the stones, and I really liked the part where he said, "And when your children ask you what they mean, you'll be able to tell them." And I was thinking about this, um, belt I have at home. And it's this really groovy, groovy belt. Like it's a groovy belt. It has black disc and, and silver disc, and they're overlaying each other, like just like a scale, almost like a dominoes. And then it's on this elastic band, but the elastic is so worn out. It's not even stretching anymore. It's not elastic. It's just falling threads in it, like clasped right here. Well, that belt belonged to my mom. She never wore it. I never ever saw her wear it. It was always in her, in her oak drawer, and I would sneak in her room and open her stuff and go through her stuff, you know? I was a brat child. But I was just so in love with this belt, how it just made the sounds and how it looked. And then as I got older, I was like, what does this belt even mean to her? And as I got older, I realized that we, as children, for some reason, when we're young, always think that our parents only started to exist the moment we were born. And that's what I often tell my teenagers. I was like, you do realize that your, your mom is like a separate entity of what she just gives you, like food and cleans up after you, right? Like, that's not just who she is. Remember when you found out she had a name? It wasn't mom or mommy. It was Diana. Called my mom that for the longest time. I still do. But it's a realization that your parents were someone before you, and that they are that person still. And that, it was just amazing. I wondered, like, did she wear this belt a lot? Was her, like, staple fashion item? Why is it so groovy? I don't think she's this old to have this kind of belt, like, I'm thinking Afro style days. She was more like Joget days. If that's the same days, I am so sorry. If it not, then great. I'm doing great. But I was just thinking about the history of that. And then as I got older, I started learning more about her history, and how she got saved at Capri Chapel, and how that just trickled down to the influence of where I am today. And once again, we never realized that our parents are people before us, but they have pictures of people that we don't know, of friends we don't know, people that we don't recognize. I mean, sometimes you have to point out to your kids, right, or your grandkids, like, that's so and so, and that's so and so. And they don't remember the memory of taking this picture. They weren't there, but you do. You remember it. And so I feel like the Israelites, these young Israelites that just got out of the desert and were being led by this new leader Joshua, they were in a relative, relatively young. And I'm feeling like me. And here they are, the generation after their parents that went through everything. And so there's like, like Timothy says, do not feel, you know, like, afraid that you're young, do not let people intimidate you just because you're young. But, and they were acting in that confidence. You know, like, we're ready. We're acting, we're ready to act on the word of God. And they're lo-, young and full of life, and ready to go at it, just as we all have been. And then as time passes by, and they stepped out on the words of God's promises, and they grabbed hold of it, and they're in this, they're in this land, and they're passing by their children. There are two monuments. There were two monuments. The stones that were in the middle of the river, that you cannot see, the twelve stones, and the twelve stones out of it. And every time they pass by the twelve stones, they'd be like, this is where it happened. This is the place. This is the place where God called us into this land, and we took hold of that promise, and this is what God had done for us. They don't have proof over at the Red Sea. They were gonna travel all the way back to the Red Sea to show their kid, "Look, you see that? I won't do that." They're like, no, it's really there. I wonder if one guy even threw his kid in the water and said, "Go touch the stone, see if it's still there." Bet you anything it's still there. They're acting on that faith. And I think it's just so wonderful that we can do that. And so unless we teach the next generation the truth about the Lord, they will turn away and start following the world. The world is very appealing, and I see it every day with my youth. I worry about my youth every day. I worry about my young people. I call them my young people. They're not. They're your, they're your kids. They're your kids, and they're your granddaughters and grandsons, but they mean a lot to me, because I fear for the world they're in, because I got caught up in the world they're, they're in. And it's really encouraging to me to see the influence of their parents and their grandparents shining through them, and that they are becoming individuals. And the world screams for these children to become individual, be your own person. And what the world is really screaming is become separated from God. You can't seem to be your own person when you're with God, because he consumes you. We're not zombies here. I think I have more personality than most of these worldly people out here combined. Just saying. And it's the love of God. He gives us that individuality. He knows every cell. I mean, I had the Holy Spirit rocking with every atom in my body. And it's fantastic. And I have never felt more truly alive, more truly than myself than before. I do deal with depression. Very much so. And sometimes, you know, thoughts come into my head that I know are not God. I know they're the devil. And without God, I wouldn't be able to recognize that. I wouldn't be able to tell, "A devil, flee from me. Like, get behind me. I recognize you." You're not even using the word of God. Like, I know the word of God, and I will use the word of God, and I will hold on to the words of God. I'll hold on to his promises. I will hold on to the truth before I start trading the truth for my feelings and for what the world wants to do, and I will never become separated from the will of God. I will never become separated from the love of God. I will not let my children become separated from the word of God. I will pray for them every day, and I will be that influence. Because it starts with me. It starts with what God wants to do with me, and I have to have that willingness. And so glorifying the past is a good way to petrify the present and rob the church of power. The next generation needs reminders of what God has done in history, but these could make a great difference in the way they're related to God and too as well for their lives. You know, a lot of people always complain about Calvert-Bisel, that it was like dominantly a white church. And they were too scared to come in, because they're all like, oh, they're gonna be too Chrissy or too uptight. And I was just like, do you know who our pastor is? Before you start judging my church, look into the history of my church. I mean, everyone's clean cut. I live clean cut. You would have never guessed my path, because God watches me while it snow. But we are not above judging it. We're, we're not here to judge anybody. Who are we? We are all the Rahabs. We are. We have all been adopted into God's family. We didn't belong. We did not have the qualifications. But Jesus made that way with this blood, with that promise. There is nothing wrong with memorials, and I just want, I like what, um, what Wiersby said about memorials. Because there's Because there's nothing wrong with memorials, provided that they don't come from religious idols that turn our hearts from God. And provided they don't link us to the past that we fail to serve God in the present. Glorifying the past, once again, is a good way to petrify the present. We don't need a huge rich church. We don't need giant buildings where we have like concerts or, you know, huge things at all. The monument right here, it was that we are the monument. We are the temple of God. We are the witness. As Jesus lives in us, we are the Word, because we have the Word living in us. The Word was with God and His Spirit is in us. The Word is on our tongues and our hearts, on our minds, on our lips. We walk with the Word. We walk with it. And then we witness it. We witness in our own lives, we witness in each other's lives, we witness it in church every day. And so understanding what true saving faith is, we understand it. If you don't, I hope you do. I hope you're able to dig deeper into this and really find out what it means to you, being able to decipher what's true and what's not true through the word of God, because the word of God makes all clear. It is this bright shining light in a world of darkness and any thoughts. And it's great to gather together and have fellowship, so that we can learn these things and that we can become sharper like a double edged sword together. It's really fantastic. Don't know why I said that last part, because I was running out of things to say. And then Joshua, we also need to walk in it. We cannot be stagnant with it. I see that in my cousin. I'm really proud of him. You know, my cousins have always been really strong Christians. And they've always been my favorite side of the family. I asked Becky, she's probably heard about them about fifteen hundred times, just in the time that I've worked here. She's all like, "Oh, who, the shepherds? Oh, you never mentioned them." I get it Becky, I get it. But I would have never dreamed that he would really be walking on his faith. I thought they were walking in their faith as much as they could. My Aunt Rosemary, his grandmother, made this sweater. I wore it today because I was just thinking about her. And she was a Christian woman and she had two children and she raised those two children. And they married godly spouses. And then they end up raising godly children. And right now, my Aunt Hattie has seventeen grandchildren. All of them are walking in the way of the Lord. It's fantastic. And they're all very close. And I just love that because I think of Aunt Rosa and I was like, I want that. I want to be that influence. I want to be, when the moment when I die, I wanna think back to my favorite song, "I Never Had A Friend Like Jesus." And then that song is talking about me. They understand like my relationship with God and that He loves me and I loved Him. And that's what I want to be remembered by me. And I don't want to be remembered about how much land I possessed or how I succeeded in life or what I had and what I had to give. I want them to remember the walk I had with Jesus above all. Even for the ones of my children and grandchildren who do not believe in God. May it be a constant reminder until the day they grow old and die, that their mother, their grandmother walked with Jesus. So that's it. I'm going to, you guys separate into groups of two and three to discuss the looking inward. Thank you very much.
Can you hear me okay? Okay. So I, first of all, getting up and cheering in front of people sometimes is hard. I took a speech class when I was a senior in high school because I thought, you never know, you know, if I'm gonna ever have to get up and talk in front of a group. And I did get an A in the class, so.
I believe that.
The other thing is, I was a very, just to share a couple of things about me. I was a very passive, shy person. A girl asked me years ago if I would come and wrap gifts at Leggins. Does anybody remember Leggins in Tulare? Oh, I couldn't do that. I couldn't come wrap Christmas gifts. I, I, we can't wrap a gift, so anyway. So first of all, I need to pray real quick. And it's just a very short prayer. So Father, please guide my words, make my presentation easy to understand and encouragement to all of those that are here. In Jesus' name. Thank you. So I've been working with Becky and Millie during the interim search for a women's ministry leader. And Becky shared that generally it's pastor's wife. I know Gail was, you know, I think led the others. So Becky starts with the children's ministry. I think everybody knows that. But she has taken the lead in the women's ministry along with Millie. And they are searching. So hopefully the Lord will provide someone soon. I offered to help and I'm here to encourage each of you to search your hearts and pray for your role in this ministry. So the title of my little talk here today was from Millie, Hearing God's Call and Answering It. And Service to the Women's Ministry of Calvary Visalia. So Judah Ronomy thirteen four says, "God calls all to serve Him and to cling to Him." So I broke this down into five different segments. First one is, what is the women's ministry role at Calvary Chapel? Jesus commands us to serve one another. Jesus equips us to serve. General characteristic strengths of a server and the opportunities to serve here at Calvary. Okay, so my references today, I have a John MacArthur study Bible that I use. And, because I need to give credit where credit is due. I have Bible study tools and Institute of Basic Life Principles. And those are a couple of different websites on the internet. But John MacArthur, in a workbook that my sister came over from the coast yesterday and she has, and shared with me, so of course I looked it up and, you know, looked up services. It says, "We live in a qualification science conscious society. Everyone, almost everything you do requires you to meet someone else's standard. You must qualify to purchase a home, buy a car, get a credit card, or attend college. The job market, the most difficult job, requires people with the highest possible qualifications. Ironically, God uses unqualified people to accomplish the world's most important task, advancing the kingdom of God." It's always been that way. And let's get him down a little. The fact is, no one is fully qualified to do God's work. That's why He uses unqualified people. Perhaps that truth is most clearly illustrated in the twelve disciples, who had numerous frailties, different temperaments, different skills, and diverse backgrounds, and yet Christ used them to change the world. So that's just part of, what was there? I thought that was kind of interesting. So what is the women's ministry role? So what are we as women here at Calvary Chapel called to do? And I was drawn toward the question, what does a healthy women's ministry look like? And I came across the four pillars of women's ministry. I was doing my research. So the first one is study. We must provide women the opportunity to study God's Word. Second Timothy three sixteen, "All Scripture is breathed out by God and profitable for teaching, for reproof, for correction, and for training in righteousness, that the man of God or woman of God may be competent, equipped for every good work." Second would be service. Women need opportunities to serve others. Doing so together as the body of Christ builds unity, encourages growth, and develops relationships. First Peter four ten, "As each has received a gift, use it to serve one another as good stewards of God's varied grace." We need to support. Women need safe places where they can find biblical sound support. This could come in the form of support groups, prayer teams, and various ministries the church offers. Ecclesiastes four ten, "For if they fall, one will lift his fellow up. But woe to him is alone when he falls, and it's not the other to lift him up." Then women need social. Women benefit by regularly meeting together with other believers. Hebrews ten twenty-five, "Not neglecting to meet together, as is the habit of some, but encouraging one another, and all the more as you see the day drawing near." I think this is what we have at Calvary. I think we have all four of those. We have an opportunity to study. We have service. We have support. And we have social gatherings. So I think we have a very healthy women's ministry. I would like to see it grow. I think all of us would. I, you know, I'm not sure how many women totally we have that come. But I think we need to encourage those who aren't participating to, you know, come alongside us and just, you know, we're nice ladies and we all have something to offer. And so, you know, but I think, I think we have a very healthy women's ministry. So the next, Jesus commands us to serve one another. So if you've made Calvary your home, then we're all called upon the Lord to serve. Serving God is one of the most important principles of the Christian faith, as believers are expected to help the church with the joyful spirit. Love one another, care for one another, pray for one another, encourage one another, help one another, counsel one another, and support one another. We must remember that serving others may not always be easy, but we will be rewarded in eternity. We must remember that nothing is too small, that God won't use it. So even if we have, you know, my mom loves to cook. She can't hardly get out and do anything, but she'll cook. And that's her little ministry that she likes to do. And, you know, I'm happy to take it to whoever needs it or whatever, but there's nothing too small. So nothing we do for God is in vain. And I looked up and here's some of the scriptures to back up the service of one another. Philippians two four, "Not looking to your own interests, but each of you to the interests of others." John twelve twenty-six, "Jesus said, whoever serves Me must follow Me. And where I am, My servant also will be. My Father will honor the one who serves Me." Romans twelve eleven, "Never be lacking in zeal, but keep your spiritual fervor, serving the Lord." Hebrews six ten, "For God, the faithful one is not unfair." He can forget the beautiful work. He cannot forget the beautiful work you have done for Him. He remembers the love you demonstrate as you continually served His beloved ones for the glory of His name. Your work is called beautiful. Your work is beautiful to Him. We see beauty in flowers and gorgeous people and beautiful homes and clothing. But what you do for Him is beautiful. To think that Jesus looks down and is so pleased with the service of our work. From bringing something potluck or washing the utensils. Last, I've shared this with you. So last week, I looked around. I was gonna take the utensils in the kitchen and washed them, because I'd brought in, you know, some tongs. And I said, walked down the hall, I saw Diana in the kitchen. And I had helped get the list together of workers and such. And I don't remember seeing Diana's name on there. And I thought, as I walked past, how beautiful God, God sees what she's doing. She didn't ask if it needed to be done. She just went and did it. And that's beautiful to Him. You know, what a blessing. Anyway, so Jesus equips us. You don't think you're able to do anything. Well, we can't do anything on our own. Jesus equips us. "In order to serve year after year and with a happy heart," happy heart is the one of the key, "must have the strength and endurance that God supplies." So the server's strength, servers tend to be one man armies. Or in our case, one woman armies, Becky. Becky is a one woman army. Goes through and, God seems to give special grace to servers to exercise humility, especially when it comes to doing menial chores, like washing the tongs in the kitchen. Availability is one of the service, server's strongest character qualities. She must never say, she almost never says no when asked to help others. Order is essential for a server. Type A personalities generally. I worked for an orthopedic surgeon for sixteen years. I had to have order. If I didn't have weight during surgery, if I hadn't scheduled everything, the doctor would come up short. And here's, you know, an open back and Debbie didn't schedule, you know, make arrangements for what? So order is essential. However, he will sacrifice order temporarily if that's, if that is necessary to get the job done. Servers have a God-given strength to do physical tasks. As we grow older, some of us don't have that physical ability, but are, you know, our minds tell us we could do things, but sometimes we can't. Of course, there are many strengths I didn't list, but the main strength is leaning on the Lord to give you what is needed. Romans fifteen thirteen, "May the God of hope fill you with all joy and peace as you trust in Him, so that you may overflow with hope by the power of the Holy Spirit." Proverbs three, five, and six, "Trust in the Lord with all your heart, lean unto your own understanding. Submit to Him and He will make your paths straight." And Philippians four thirteen, I love that. I could do all things through Christ who strengthens me. General characteristic strengths of someone who serves. Christians motivational, first I have to say, I have to print everything out. Because my memory, the older I get, I can't ad lib or whatever. I ad libbed in front of my computer and typed, so. Christians motivational, spiritual gift represents what God does in Him or Her to shape His perspective on life and motivate His words and actions. Romans twelve, three through eight describes basic motivations, which are characterized by inherent qualities or abilities within a believer that create His unique workmanship. And Romans twelve, three through eight, "For through the grace given to me, I say to every man among you, not to think more highly of himself than he ought to think, but to think so as to have sound judgment, as God allotted to each of us a measure of faith. For just as we have many members in one body, and all the members do not have the same functions, so we, who are many, are one body in Christ, and individual members, one of another. Since we all have gifts that differ according to the grace given to us, each of us is to exercise them accordingly." God makes believers aware of needs that He wants to meet through us for His glory. Then believers can minister to others in ways beyond mere human capability and ingenuity with maximum effectiveness and minimum weariness. Each person's behavior will vary according to factors such as temperament, background, age, circumstances. And this is so true. We're all different, but God knows each of us. Psalm one thirty-nine, I just love this song. And I've, I wanted to read it at my funeral. And every time I read it, I read it through tears. Because He knows us even from before we are formed. And He has given us gifts. He's given us strengths. He's given us weaknesses. Here are some general characteristics of those people who serve. A server's basic motivational drive is to demonstrate love by meeting practical needs. A server is diligent and willing to sacrifice his time and energy in order to complete a task. Most servers express and receive satisfactory reward from doing tangible work. Cooking something, bringing something. He's, and let's see, he serves by doing. Servers generally prefer short-term tasks as their spiritual fulfillment comes from completing that task. I know that's me. I wanna get in, get it done, and have the results as opposed to work on something and I'm not gonna get the results for another six months. It's nice to have. It's nice to have, such as this four-week Bible study. You know, we get in, we're doing it, we're being blessed, and it's a short term that we see good results. A server, server will also volunteer to serve in church-related or group-related projects. And you can count on them to be one of the people who are still around at the end of the project, to see it through to completion. I remember at another women's, another church, a women's Bible study. One of the women, we were having a conference, and one of the ladies, "I'll do that, I'll do that." And I don't remember the circumstances. I remember it being a fairly substantial task. And we would go to meeting after meeting, and she wasn't there. She wasn't there. How is she doing? Well, I heard she's doing good. Okay, do we need to get anyone to replace her? No, she said she's gonna finish it. Well, here we are, just a few weeks away. Nothing was done. Someone else had to be called in to finish it. And I thought, how sad. Well, this time is lost. So, you know, when you offer to do something, you have to fulfill it. Sometimes servers would rather carry out responsibility themselves and be down with it than assigning the task to someone else. And that's kind of another of the type A personality. No, I'll just do it myself. You know, Becky, sometimes she'll ask, and, you know, sometimes she just will take it upon herself to do it. So it's nice to be able to talk with her and find out what she needs. So, I have here a list of, let's see my notes here. Opportunity, okay, so the final one is opportunities to serve at Calvary Chapel. So, talk with Becky, Millie. We need more women to become active in the ministry. We don't want to leave any women out for lack of not interacting with them. So I'm trying to make it a point to introduce myself to the women that are here in church on Sunday that I don't know, and let them know, we have a healthy women's ministry. You know, it'd be wonderful for you to connect. Some people are shy. They feel incompetent, incompetent, clumsy. They're non-crafty. They're non-creative. Don't like to offer their ideas for fear of embarrassment. So it's imperative that we try and connect with all the women. And that's just what I'm saying. Say hello, introduce yourself, invite them. There was a couple, of course, now that we, there's a new pastor, there are some people who are wondering, you know, maybe I need to come back to Calvary Chapel. We've talked with two or three couples. And I remember seeing her in church. It was about a month ago. And after service was over, I went up to her. And I said, "I know your husband," because he's a Realtor, and, "but I can't remember your first name." And she said, "I am so glad that you came up to me and said hello." I look around, "We came here for so many years, and I just don't see anybody I know." Well, lo and behold, two weeks ago, here they come in with another couple. And I recognized them also as being Calvary Chapel from years ago. And I, of course, you know, my husband calls me a little social butterfly. I don't know about that. But I had to go over, "Cam, I recognize you." She didn't know me. She couldn't, she didn't remember me. "Oh, I remember you," and, you know, because her husband was a Realtor too. And they were both just, "Oh, yeah, thanks for coming over." So we have, Becky has set the agenda through September. So, we will finish out the next two Saturdays with a Bible study. April is going to be, the event has changed, is going to be a church picnic. So, yeah, yeah. So all of us, so if any event's going on, and you want to, you know, get on any food tonight before, be sure and get over in. So Becky will have, Becky will have all the information on that. Mother's Day, May 9th. This will be our May event. There's going to be a Mother's Day brunch. Becky sent me all the information. Looks like she's already got, she's got a worship team. She's got silent auction. So tickets are going to be needed. Lori's introducing the speaker. And so with raffle, that means donation of items. So, you know, Becky, I would love to see, you know, what needs you still have. And, you know, we can get some ladies plugged in, maybe. June 19th.
I'm sorry, what was that, Lori?
I think it's May 7th, right?
May 9th.
No, did I write May 9th?
Yes.
Sorry, May 7th.
Oh, maybe I mistyped it.
Saturday before Mother's Day.
Okay, so, so May 7th. Sorry about that. Okay, so the 7th. June, there's going to be a Father's Day lunch. So we're gonna need help with that, right? Possibly, Father's Day lunch, possibly. Okay. If not, Becky will keep us updated. July 18th through the 22nd, Vacation Bible School. Okay, so. July 18th through the 22nd. Did I type that correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So Vacation Bible School, so.
Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday. So if you can't help all of them, you know, I don't know, whatever needs Becky has. So Becky and Millie are in the office and, you know, find out what they would like. And then July 22nd starts the summer, I called it the summer vacation, through September 3rd. September 3rd is the first Saturday in September, and that will be the final four Joshua Bible study meetings that will happen here. So, find a spot, talk with Becky. I'm challenging everyone to do a little something, and we'll grow our ministry and we'll be a service. Service to the kids and the men that are here, and of course, our pastor and his wife. And so, two things that I would like to see, and I don't know, Becky, you already talked about, what, both of these actually, is the prayer, a prayer chain. Do we have a prayer chain?
We have a prayer email.
A prayer email. Okay. Do you know what the email is?
It's prayer@calvaryvisalia.
Prayer@calvary. I have. CalvaryVisalia.
Dot word.
Dot word.
So any prayer requests can go to that. Or we have prayer cards at the center.
Okay.
You can fill out.
Okay, all right, so we can do that. Okay. And then food for people who are confined at home. Do you have?
No.
Okay.
I don't have anybody leading that.
Leading that. So are you looking for someone to lead that?
Yeah, that would be great.
So is anyone here interested in leading that ministry? That we can let people know if food is needed? If you're not comfortable, pray about it. Pray about it. And then if you feel drawn to that, let Becky know. And so as far as food for the pastor, then we can just.
Yeah, let me know.
Let Becky know. Okay, so let's pray about someone stepping up into that leadership role.
So it would really just be somebody to make sure that meals aren't delivered on the same day.
Right.
And that the same meal isn't getting delivered again and again.
Right.
Like spaghetti every night.
Spaghetti, salad, and potato rolls. Yes. We need a little bit of variety, you know. Okay, so let's.
But there are teenagers, so the teenagers are probably gonna eat. Pastor Michael eats anything and everything. But I don't know about the kids. The kids are probably a little more likely to eat Pastor Michael.
So, yeah, see, I'm a heavy gift carder.
Do you want the date of that, whenever you need it?
Yes, so she goes into surgery on the 21st.
March.
So, March 21st, which is the Monday after next, this coming, not this coming Monday, but the following Monday. And then it'll, he'll be there for two weeks. It'll be, if we can just get them, it doesn't even have to be meals every single day, because there's leftovers and.
Yeah.
But if, if we could get like a Monday, Wednesday, Friday meal plan kind of going for them, it can be meals, it can be Grubhub cards. It could be, you know, groceries.
They're close, aren't they close to Dimmery and Rigan?
Yeah.
Where the Lowe Shopping Center is.
Correct.
So even something on the Lowe Shopping Center area.
They're from there, yes.
Yeah, would be nice, because then it's just a matter of doing the order, driving up, and, you know, I think even now, they still deliver out to your car if you want.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, okay.
So let's close in prayer. And I hope that, you know, this has been clear to you and sweet. And let's just all pray about how we are going to connect and serve one another in our precious Jesus. So Father, thank you for this time together. I just feel so blessed that we are able to come to this wonderful building, receive the word of God from Michael, have the love for one another. The love that Becky has for us is just, I just feel it every time I get to put my arms around her. And I'm so precious. She's such a precious child of yours. So I ask that you bless our day. Please be with the Ukrainian people who are just having such a horrible time, Lord, that your will be done, that hearts and minds could be changed. But Father, we thank you for everything you have. I ask that you bless the rest of our day. And let us be a blessing of women's ministry of Calvary to one another and to those that we will come upon and meet every single day. In the precious name of your precious Son, Jesus, I pray. Amen.